Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 22 work session of Charles County Board of Education. Can we please begin with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no one signed up for public forum, that's correct? No, okay. But before we get into the rest of the meeting, I will turn it over to Dr. Navarro so she can make an announcement.
Good evening, everybody. I always like this part of the board meetings. All of the parts of the board meeting are riveting, but every once in a while, we get to come to you and present our new leadership. And so tonight, we want to present our new Director of Transportation. And so I will defer to Nikki to come forward and give us a little bio. And you get an opportunity to meet one of our newest leaders in the school system.
So, good evening, board members as well as our viewing public. It is my pleasure to introduce our new Director of Transportation. We have conducted a long and extensive search for a very talented individual who has spent over 20 years in the transportation industry. He started out as a young man, and he's still young. But he started out as a young man in this industry and has amassed a number of educational and work experience qualifications. So before coming onboard with us next month in September, Mr. Tonkins worked for the Department for Higher Vehicles as the Transportation Director. And of course, he will transition to us as our Director of Transportation. So prior to that role, Mr. Tonkins worked for the District Department of Transportation as a Quality Assurance Manager for a number of years. Before that, he worked for the Office of the State Superintendent of Education in Washington DC as a Program Manager in their Division of Student Transportation. So he was there for a couple of years. Prior to that, he was at Enviro Solutions as a Senior Operations Manager for a few years. He's also worked for the Close Up Foundation as the Transportation Logistics Manager. So as you can hear from his background, he has a lot of transportation experience from routing to fleet management to supervision, et cetera, et cetera. So we're excited to have him come onboard. He currently holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science, and he is currently working on his Master's Degree in Business Administration, which he expects to obtain this fall. So we are so excited to have Mr. Tonkins join us. We are looking forward to him coming onboard. He has brought with him his beautiful family this evening. So I'm gonna let him say a few words and introduce his family.
Good afternoon, I'm Jason Tonkins, and it's a pleasure to be here. I would like to thank Charles County Leadership for the opportunity to serve the county and also to be of service. Tonight here, I have support me, my wife, Nia, my son Noah, my daughter Noel. Noel's like a drill sergeant, so we have a time limit when we have to leave. But I'm grateful to have this opportunity to work with you. I look forward to this upcoming school year and all the challenges that it brings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tonkins. I'll turn it back over to Chairperson Lucas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Majors. So now, we're going to get into the Strategic Plan Metrics. And Dr. Navarro?
Yes, so thank you and good evening again. And the riveting presentations will continue. This evening, as you recall, when the board approved the strategic plan for the school system, one of the non-negotiables in the strategic plan was the fact that we needed to make sure that we held ourselves accountable. And so we embedded metrics that are supposed to be the guiding post for the community and for us to hold ourselves accountable, to continuously improve and mobilize the opportunities for all of our students. And so tonight, we're coming back to you because we said we were going to develop dashboards and ways in which the community could follow along with our progress. So I have in front of me our team, Steve Roberts, Kevin Lowndes, and Dr. Marvin Jones. And from them, you will be able to see our website. We want to go live with this website because we said to the community that we wanted to make sure they could follow our progress. And so tonight, you will see the components of how we developed this website. Please, we want to get your insights. We really want to get the board's approval and feedback and input so that we can make sure that it makes sense and it is tied to what we said we were going to do in the strategic plan. And more importantly, it's also accessible and understandable to our public that is following our progress. So without much else, I'll have Steve Roberts kick us off. And you can follow along with the website. That is actually, we'll present directly from the website.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. I want to go ahead and start with showing you that this is the landing page for the strategic dashboard. So you'll see an outline of what the strategic plan that Dr. Navarro had presented to you guys previously. And you can see that there's Priority One, Priority Two, and Priority Three. So each of these, it outlines exactly what the strategic plan has involved in it. And as you are well aware, Priority One has two goals, Priority Two has two goals, and Priority Three has one goal. So with that, we have the metrics established with graphics to show you what these metrics are. You'll see throughout the evening tonight that we'll be showing you, for the most part, 21, 22 school year data. But we're going to use some previous years just as a baseline so you can see some sort of reference as to where we were this year compared to previous years, if data was available. And moving forward, the 21, 22 school year will be our baseline data from here on out. So as we continue and add to the dashboard and show future data, you'll see that 21, 22 is the first year, then we'll keep moving beyond that with additional years as we collect data and present it accordingly. So for Priority One, the first one we'll start with is our student performance. So underneath the metrics tag there, you'll see the student performance. What's nice about this, again, this is public facing. They'll be able to click on it. The public will be able to click right on to the dashboard and see exactly what's happening. So bear with me as the mouse is a little jumpy, so I'll work with it as we go. So as indicated in Dr. Navarro's strategic plan, she laid out each of the different metrics that we're going to be using throughout when we present this to you and for the public to be able to see. So the first one is going to be the iReady data. So we've put together the iReady data, and you can see there's lots of different ways to go through it and see it. But we're going to start here with the iReady results for the school level. So what you also will notice here is we're showing 21, 22 school year, starting with where our students scored in the fall and then where they ended up in the spring. So showing the growth from fall to the spring in terms of the diagnostics that they took. So when we previously had shown this data to you, we showed it in the five-number scale. We made it a lot easier for the public to see, so we broke it down into two different categories. We have either on or above grade level highlighted in the green, and then in the orange, below grade level. So you can see clearly where students were. So this first graph is showing the reading, as you can see at the top. Again, we'll have two different sets of diagnostics, the reading and the mathematics. So here's the reading, and you can see fall to spring for elementary level, fall to spring, middle school, and then again for high school, from fall to spring. Now, it's important to note that for the high school, for reading, we only tested English 1 A-level students. We didn't test the entire high school student body. We only tested 9th grade, English 1 A-level. So going into the 22, 23 school year, we will be testing all 9th grade for English. So we'll be able to get a real good look at where our students were. So similarly, for mathematics, you can see, again, the green is where we were for where our students are in terms of one grade level or above, and then the orange is below grade level. And you can see where our students progressed from fall to the spring for each of the different grade levels. And again, at the high school level for mathematics, it was a limited scope in terms of who we assessed. We only assessed Algebra 1 students at the high school level.
Steve, let me pause you there for a second. So just one thing, you can also follow this link as you're viewing it on your device if you look at your email, board members, because I know it might be a little bit difficult to see. And the way the website is, it's an expandable, so you can expand or contract different areas. And so for Goal One, right now, we're going through the iReady data, which is one of the metrics for the first part of the strategic plan. And so that data is just, as Steve said, summarized. When we came to you in June, we showed you five categories, and we just shrunk it down to two. Are students on grade level or above, or are they below grade level? And so that allows also for the public to just quickly follow it. Of course, as educators, you know, we want to see it, how far below, how many years, you know, how far above. But the public really wants to know, on grade level or above, or not on grade level? So that's one of the things that, as you look at those graphs, you can take a look at. Thank you.
So then, as Dr. Navarro was explaining, you can just click the minus and it closes back up, allows you to see as you go through where you are. So I'm going to move to the iReady results by grade level. So this, again, allows you to see, again, we have the reading and the mathematics scores. So using the same breakdown with the green and the orange. All right, so then again, we only administered a diagnostic to grades first through 8th grade to every student, and we didn't do kindergarten. And then, again, for high school, we did just English 1 A-level and Algebra for the mathematics. So you can, again, see by grade level where we were, where our students were from the fall to the spring for this past school year. Now what you can also do is you can peruse the data on your own. You can take a look at iReady results by subgroup. You can also take a look at it by race and ethnicity. It's all broken down that way, so you can take a look at it more closely and see, using the same breakdowns between the on-grade level and above and the below-grade level. So I'm going to move on to the next part of the student performance in Priority One. So what we have here is we're going to end up adding the Maryland Conference of Assessment Program, MCAP. We do not have that data yet. The, there has been an extension in terms of the results due to 2022 Spring being the first full MCAP assessment that took place since pandemic. It was scheduled initially for the 1920 school year, but this 21, 22 is the first time that that's taken place. So as a result of that, the state still has to do the range finding in a standard setting. So we are anticipating having current student results in early 2023. So then, once we get those, we'll be able to post the MCAP assessment scores there. So moving on to the next student performance piece is the Curriculum Common Assessments. The Office of Teaching and Learning has developed these common assessments that are going to be administered from pre-K all the way to grade 12. And once we have results of those after this 2022, 22, 23 school year, we'll be able to post those scores. And what this is going to allow us to do is to really see where our students are. And internally, we're going to be able to make sure that our schools are aligned so that we can really get a good grasp of where our students are and what kind of things we need to do instructionally. So as those are, as those results come in, we'll be able to post those here right in this Curriculum Common Assessments. Now, another piece of Dr. Navarro's strategic plan was the percentage of 2nd graders reading or nor above grade level, and as well as the percentage of 5th grade students or nor above grade level in math. So this is the reading one. And what you can see is we have a comparison between 2nd grade CCPS at the fall and where Maryland students were at the fall. So in terms of Maryland students, there were roughly 19,000 students that were assessed. So that's where those numbers come from. Use the same coloring, but it's a little bit darker so you can distinguish between the Maryland values and where our students were CCPS. So the first two bars are CCPS, 2nd grade fall, Maryland, 2nd grade fall, and then where our students ended the year with the diagnostic for CCPS, and then for 2nd grade at, for Maryland, for all 2nd grade. Again, roughly 19,000 students taken at the Maryland.
Can I just add, just quickly here, remember that we're using the iReady as an indicator because we don't have the state data yet? I would imagine that once we get state data, we will start using the state metric. But this is the iReady data from anybody who took 19,000 2nd graders in Maryland to take the iReady. It's the only data comparison that we have right now. So we are using the diagnostic indicator, but eventually, we will use the metric at the state for the state assessment. And hopefully, you know, those match.
And then similarly, you'll be able to see that the same setup is set here for the 5th graders. So we have the CCPS 5th grade mathematics, Maryland 5th grade mathematics, and then CCPS in the spring, and then Maryland in the spring. Again, roughly 19,000 Maryland students in 5th grade took the same diagnostic, and that's what we're using here is our comparison between spring to fall. All right, so I'm going to pass it off for the next part of the Priority One. Metric measurement will be the professional learning piece.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Chairperson Lucas, Vice Chairperson Wilson, and Chairperson People, thank you very much for having us come today. And talking about the professional learning, we offer many opportunities for professional learning throughout the year, where we have opportunities in curriculum, we have opportunities around safety. And so in trying to identify the area that is relevant to the strategic plan, what we've looked at and what we're going to capture is the professional learning that relates to the implementation of the school improvement plans. So this year, we've asked every school to implement a school improvement plan. And within that school improvement plan, they have to identify a powerful instructional practice, and they have to identify a culture and climate strategy. I'll let Dr. Jones talk later about the climate and culture strategy, excuse me. But in talking and looking at the powerful instructional practice, what studies have shown is that a school looks at a practice as a school-wide focus in an area such as literacy, and studies it as a school, as a professional learning community, and really understands some strategies that go along with that powerful practice and implement it with fidelity, they see school improvement achievement going up in the schools. And so we've asked every school to identify one powerful instructional practice. And we're going to bring those school teams together, and we have schools identify professional learning teams. And these teams within the schools are administrators, teachers, and service providers. And we're bringing them together eight times during the year. We know where they have focused and pick and chose their powerful instructional practice. And we have arranged the Central Office Instructional Team to identify those four areas. And we're going to provide professional learning to those teams when they come to us eight times this year. And then they'll leave with that training that they've obtained through Central Office, and they'll go back to their schools, and they'll provide a similar training with their building so that each one of their teachers and everyone in their building will understand what the powerful instructional practice is that they're focused in on in their building. So the first thing that we're going to identify in the area of the professional learning is keeping track of who's coming to the Central Office trainings, but also who's coming to the school-level trainings. And so we'll be able to identify the percentage of folks within the building that have been able to participate within the professional learning around a powerful instructional practice. The other thing that we want to keep track of and that we have in the strategic plan is the implementation of that practice. And so we are going to be training schools and school teams on how to do walkthroughs throughout the building to identify the powerful instructional practices taking place within classrooms, but also have professional dialogue with their peers around the professional learning that has taken place in the practices that are going on in their classrooms. So that is the area that we're focusing in on in Priority One around the professional learning. At this time, I don't know if you have any questions around Priority One, with the student performance data from Mr. Roberts or the professional learning from myself?
Ms. Wilson?
I'm having a flashback on a previous conversation about school improvement plans. Are you requiring your principals to submit a report to you? Or is this more of a informal exchange?
No, so actually, Dr. Jones's office will be working with Mr. Lowndes's office. Every school has to submit a school improvement plan. The teams began looking at this year's data in June as a school team. They were giving, we stipulated people who were not 12-month employees so that they would have time during the summer to come together as a team. And then on August 11th, the teams came back together. And what is a little bit different than what traditionally happens with a school improvement plan, where teams write up a plan, Central Office reads it one time, and then it goes on a shelf, and then from time to time, people may pick it up and update it, put in the newest data, is that we are not doing that. We are doing cycles of learning. As Mr. Lowndes mentioned, every single month, we are creating a district-wide disruptor to the routines of the schools where we have those teams coming out and learning about their powerful instructional practice, what the adults commit to learn and do in the school as an entire team. And we are going deeper into that powerful instructional practice so that we build fluency on what it should look like. But part of that fluency is also built in the ability to go observe each other, not just in our schools amongst ourselves, but across different schools that are working on their powerful instructional practice. That could be the same as ours, it could be slightly different. So the school improvement plan is constantly in an evolving process because we use it to really document our monthly work with teams. And it's not sort of a stagnant document. It actually is, at the end, an artifact of all of the work that we're doing. And as I mentioned to you when we presented a little bit on this, the school system will feel like this is a big disruption because it is meant to be a disruptor, and it is meant to keep, to remove the sort of siloed structures that we have around teaching practices, and that we look at each other and we learn together in terms of what is it that the student is experiencing, and are we really doing what we said and what we're learning works best for students?
All right, good question, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, I'll go on to Priority Two, access and opportunity. And this is where we're looking at barriers and what's in the way from students participating in either a program or a class, or not having the opportunity to take advantage of all of the programs and classes that we offer here in Charles County Public Schools. The first area that we focused in on is pre-K. We are looking at expanding pre-K, all-day pre-K opportunities for many students. I want to preface this by speaking a little bit about the pre-K and who qualifies for Tier One this year. And so when we look at, the state has made some changes as to who qualifies for Tier One. And Tier One students, they have to be offered the opportunity to take advantage of the pre-K programs within the school system. So it's mandatory that they be given a slot within our programs. And so when you look at Tier One students this year, if you have a family of four, the income level for this year that family would qualify for Tier One is almost $84,000 compared to last year, which was around $48,000. So as you can see, many more of our families will qualify for Tier One than they have in the past. And it goes down to, like, two members in the family, this year, it's around $55,000 qualifies. And last year, it was around $31,000 would qualify. So as you can see, many more families are qualifying for Tier One. And as of right now, we are finding places for them within our buildings. And I know that you have heard from some families that don't qualify for Tier One, that qualify for either Tier Two or Tier Three, that are frustrated about not getting in. And I do apologize for that. We are working as quickly as possible to get all of our families in. Some of our families that qualify for Tier One, we are currently working with them to get the proper paperwork in. It's a complex process to get all of the paperwork and submit everything in financially to show that you qualify for Tier One. And so sometimes, it takes some time in going back and forth and getting the proper paperwork. So we are working with families, and we hope to have all of our Tier One families in by mid-September at that time, just to let you know. So if you can just be patient with us, and the families can be patient with us.
Thanks, Ms. Lowndes. Could you repeat, again, those dollar amounts for the Tier One?
So a family of four is approximately $84,000 this year would qualify for Tier One. And last year, it was close to $49,000, $48,000. And so as you can see, that's almost 60%.
And I think at our last meeting, have a question? At our last meeting, the superintendent discussed, and this act, and discussed the importance of everyone filling out, even if you don't think you're going to qualify, the free and reduced forms, because it helps us get a better metric on the county and our school system.
Actually, we need it this year because what their state is requiring is that, last year, we did categories, and this year, we're doing tiers. And so this year, we have to look at the money within the tiers, who qualifies for Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And so that's why, you know, we're requesting that everyone submit the financials so that we have a good indication of who falls into what category.
And do you have the dollar amounts for the other two tiers?
I don't have any right now.
Okay, all right. Ms. McGraw?
Well, it was just along the same lines. I was wondering, are there any students that are directly certified for, because of perhaps the family is receiving assistance?
So all of these families that fall into Tier One do qualify automatically. And then we are mandated to have the slot within our programs for them. Now, I will say, the good thing is, is that last year, we had 15 schools with full day and was 39 classes. And this year, we're going to have all 22 of our elementary schools offering full day, and we're going to have 51 classes where that will be available. And so we have opened up many more opportunities for full day. Last year, we did have some half-day programs in some of our schools. This year, the only half-day programs that we will have will be for our three-year-olds and students that have IEPs. Once again, that our three- and our four-year-olds can, that have IEPs, participate in our pre-K programs.
Ms. Paddle Lockhart?
Just one quick question, just out of curiosity. Since we're accepting more students, and this might be a different area, but does that open up our opportunity to expand before and after care opportunities with Alphabet for those families that's coming into, that's normally wouldn't be? Because that's a huge, that's a big amount.
Well, I mean, it does, an opportunity, we, with discussions with them, if families want to, and we can find spots and places for them to help support that, yes. The thing that we are right now is we're mandated by the blueprint to expand the pre-K programs. And one of the things that the state does recognize when we're on this call is that space is going to be a problem for many LEAs. And that, you know, eventually, they want to go three-year-olds. One of the reasons why I think they held off right now is because... One of the reasons why I think they held off right now is because with the expansion of the tier one, with the number of more families that are going to qualify, they understand that school systems are having a difficult time finding places within their buildings. And so that's one of the things that we are going to have a constant discussion with Mr. Heim and folks, and looking at where can we find more room as we expand for more students, both three- and four-year-olds. It is going to be a discussion, it's also a discussion that we're having with our private providers, because we need many more private providers within Charles County that we can partner up with. And we, you know, we're anxious to do so, and part of the process this year was for the pre-K program in Charles County, Beth and Megan, to have open houses with our private providers to explain the process with the state in hopes that they would join us on that, and that we could provide many more opportunities within the private pre-K. Unfortunately, we have not had very many takers. I think it's just going to take some time in getting people to understand what it is. The process is quite cumbersome with what we heard from the private providers, and it does require them to save some seats because their openings for their students happens much earlier than the public school system. And so it's just something that we're going to have to continue to work with and find within the county.
And under the blueprint, and I'm not sure of the timeframe, but is it 30% of those pre-K spots have to be provided by private providers?
Yeah, we're going to have to ask for a waiver, unfortunately.
Yeah, but that is a mandate of the blueprint.
Yeah, and just to connect, Mr. Lucas, if I may, some dots for the board members. So when Mike Heim comes and gives construction updates, just a reminder that there's some expansions for pre-K that are going to be opening, Malcolm, et cetera, they're going to be opening next year, JP Ryan, and so forth. So we are expanding our facilities, we are, we have that restriction, we are trying to really work hard with our non-private providers, because the law requires the non-private providers. But something that I just want to mention to the board as well is, you know, just like the blueprint was an advocacy and had funding to support a lot of these expansions, perhaps there's also, I think every school system, it really needs to see the support in the CIP process of expanding pre-K, because expanding pre-K is not just the teacher salaries and so forth. For most of the school systems, there is a CIP component, and it would be interested, it's of interest to us, the superintendents, to have those conversations around CIP funding at the state level as it involves the pre-K expansion. There is nothing much more that is facility-driven in the blueprint that is not tied to early childhood and that pre-K expansion.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm sure the staff is constantly crunching numbers, so it's good to hear that we have 22 schools full-time. How many, what's the enrollment? What is the approximate enrollment that's anticipated for this school year, for, which is?
We approximately have around 800 seats for our students that don't receive special education services, and then a little over 200 seats for students that have IEPs.
So then for the tier, for the rest of the tiers, we, how many, what's the general enrollment? Do you know? Could you guess?
The number that are currently in the queue and waiting to get in?
Right.
I can get you that number. It's, but the problem we're having right now is, is that when we look at the number of tier one students that are still, we're waiting to get information from, so we've closed off, I think, five schools already that have full enrollment. And some of those schools that have full enrollment, I need people to understand that they still have people that qualify for tier one, that would be their home school. But because we have to find them a spot, then we then work with transportation, and we find the school that's closest to them that has an opening within their pre-K program, and we place that student there. And so when we look at all of our tier one students and placing all of our tier one, as of right now, it doesn't look like we'll get very many tier-two students. We probably, as of right now, doesn't look like we'll get any tier-three students. But we don't know until everything falls out. I'm just saying, you've asked me to kind of, looking at the enrollment and where we are right now, but I do, you know, that's, we're really tight right now as far as the number of families that qualify for tier one, and then also the number of families that have want to get in with tier two and tier three.
But our obligation, and every LEA's obligation?
Is tier one.
Is tier one.
Correct.
Mr. Lucas, could?
I'm sorry, Dr. Jones, yes.
Just for the sake of the public, and getting, circling back to the question that Ms. Battle Lockhart asked about Alphabet or the before-and-after programs and whether or not they're, they kind of automatically come along with the expansion of pre-K, and that they really don't, so there's a separate entity there. And so, you know, we are in communication, of course, with those organizations, but it's not an automatic, you know, automatic that they, their spots are automatically increased based on the number of the expansion of our pre-K programs, just so.
No, I was only referring to just Alphabet because they're housed in our schools. Yeah, I wasn't.
And I will say that this summer, we use them as part of our summer boost program, and that we had many families taking advantage of them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So the other part of pre-K that we look at is kindergarten readiness, KRA exam. And I want to talk a little bit about this test, because the test is given usually around the first or second week of September, and it ends, the window ends either the first or second week of October. And so what it's supposed to measure is when students are coming into kindergarten, and the kindergarteners take it in the test, are they prepared to learn? Where's their readiness in learning? And the reason why we have it teamed up with our pre-K program is because we can look at kind of our students that took advantage of our pre-K program and where they fall when they take their kindergarten readiness assessment the following year in kindergarten. When you look at the KRA score this year, you'll see that the number of students or percentage of students that demonstrate readiness, and this is the highest level, dropped off from the previous year. And so it was at 34.9% this past year. But I want to, you know, remind folks that these, these students that were in kindergarten this year are the students that were hit by, with COVID, where they weren't in a building the prior year, and when they were three-year-olds, if they participated in any type of pre-K program in March, that's when COVID hit. And so we're talking about students that didn't have an opportunity, for the most part, to be in a school-wide setting and take advantage of in-person learning, and their first time was in kindergarten. And so, you know, we'll be looking at that. This year will give us a good indication, we look at the KRA scores of the students that participated in our pre-K program and where we were last year.
Questions from any board members?
So the next program we have at the elementary level is the two-way immersion program. This program, data is not available yet. The implementation of the program will coincide with the opening of the next Charles County Public School Elementary Number 23. But I do want to let you know that we are now preparing for that, that it takes some time, actually, to prepare staff and to train staff, and to get out and talk to the community and let the community know what a two-way immersion program would look like. And so that the planning will start, and has started in the spring of last year, and will continue to start, and will continue to go out, and this year, we'll get some input from the community about the two-way immersion program. But the idea is that that program will coincide with the opening of the new elementary school.
Can I just add that what typically will happen is about a two-to-three-year start, and the community will begin to ask a question, where, which school is it going to be in? And is it going to be something that I can have access to and attend? And what is it going to look like, and what are we going to do with staffing? So we will come back to the board as we are planning and designing what makes sense for the population in Charles County, the specific language, the target language, what would it look like? And we will probably request to do an update as we begin to construct the structure of what it will be, and do those updates, and then present those updates and timetables as an update on the strategic plan.
So for the middle school years, what we were focusing in on is getting more high school opportunities, taking high school courses in the middle school years, with the idea that with the blueprint, we have to start opening up pathways for students when they get to high school, and that if we don't start allowing them to take some of these high school-level courses in the middle school, it really does limit the amount of pathways that they can take by the time they get to high schools. One of those classes is world language classes, Spanish, French, and the way that, when we talk about opportunity access, when we talked about at the beginning, we looked at barriers. So one of the barriers that we saw when we looked at what students were in our world languages classes in the middle schools, we noticed that you had to be in that advanced pathway in the elementary school. Prior to getting to middle school, you'd be able to have the opportunity to take a world language class when you got into the middle school. And so one thing that we're doing this year is with two of our middle schools, we're running a pilot program with Hanson and with Summers. We've decoupled our English classes, and right now, in most of our middle schools, the English class is a 90-minute block, and for that first 45 minutes, they will get the first instruction, and then for the second 45 minutes, they'll get targeted supports, depending on where the students' needs are. The same thing with math. The first 45 minutes is first instruction for all students, and then the second 45 minutes was some targeted help and interventions for students. But what that did with those two 90-minute blocks was it really limited the amount of opportunities that students had to take a world language class. And so by decoupling those, what we've done is they will now have a 45-minute English class, a 45-minute math class, and then that other 45 minutes that was attached to those block classes will now be an opportunity to take a world language class if they don't need interventions and help and support. If they do need interventions and help and support, we've created some singleton classes, some 45-minute classes, with targeted help and targeted support based on some interventions that students need within those areas. But it does, and has allowed more students the opportunity to take world language classes, or in the future, we're looking to offer tech classes at the high school level and other opportunities for high school-level courses down in the middle schools. This pilot program is only the two schools this year, but we are opening it up for all of our middle schools next year. We wanted to get a good indication of how to schedule and how to work with schools, these two schools, before we opened it up for all of our middle schools. One of the things that we have noticed with Hanson is that there are many more students that are taking world language classes. It's hard to tell with Summers, to tell you the truth, because they actually have a much smaller school this year than they did last year, and so they've lost over 300 students. And so when you look at their numbers for the world language, we have to tease it out a little bit more and do it by percentage to see how well we've done. But I just want to let you know where we are with opening up access in our middle So for our high school courses, we have CTE, early college, advanced placement, and dual enrollment. And the reason why, I'll go over each one of these individually, but I want to talk a little bit about them as a whole. So when you're in high school, students can only take so many classes and pick so many pathways. And so all of these are vying for the same students or similar students, and therefore, we have to look at it as a whole as to how well our students are leaving when they graduate with a program, in a completer program, that's going to help them either find a job or be successful once they go to a university or college. And so the first program I want to talk a little bit about is our CTE program. And the numbers that we look at, when you look at the blue and you look at the orange, they are not related. Sometimes it's confusing when they're close to each other that you think the two should be related, but they're not. So the blue actually is the number of students that are taking one or, at least one CTE class. So you have to take one to be in a pathway, to start the pathway, and so that's why we're starting to look at that number. The orange is actually the number or percentage of seniors that have graduated with a completer program. And so the blue is kind of the beginning of the pathway, and the orange is the end of the pathway, is the way I look at it.
And could you define for everyone, please, just sort of for the public, what a completer program is?
So a completer program could be an engineering program that we have with Project Lead the Way, where the students have taken the sequence of courses that allows them to get the completer and the certificate within the Project Lead the Way. Or it could be construction, where the student ended up taking a certain amount of construction courses and ended up getting the certification that they needed to go out and to be certified and do the construction job.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Battle Lockhart?
For the sake of dialogue that we're having right now, do you have to have a certification to be considered a completer?
No, not all state programs need to have a certification to be completed. So they do have, the state of Maryland has designated a set of courses and a sequence of courses that students have to complete in order to complete the program. So depending on the program, really will depend on what the completer is. Good point, Ms. Battle Lockhart, thank you.
Just make sure the public knows that.
Yeah. We'll update the last column as soon as we have those numbers finalized for the 21-22 school year. Vice Chair.
Could you, for the sake of, I don't want to forget about this, we've talked a lot about instruction and matrix thus far, but the guidance counselors in our school system play a vital role in all of this. Will there be some extended conversations, professional development, et cetera, et cetera, with our guidance counselors? Because, you know, they provide guidance to the students and the pathways, and they, a lot of times, are probably the primary entity that is saying, hey, have you, have you thought about taking Algebra I in eighth grade? Is guidance counselors a part of this overall conversation as well?
So we do have professional learning for them, so Rebecca Pearson, the head of our director for our CTE programs, does meet with the guidance counselors to go over the career pathways. And we met with the counselors last year to go over the early college program, but it is an area that we do know we have to do more, and that we do have to continue working with our guidance counselors to make sure that they understand. Because as we grow and offer more programs, it's only going to get more complex for students and for the guidance counselors and for families to understand what these pathways are once they get to high school. And we have to start actually in the middle school, because some of them, like the early college program, if you're going to get an AA, you actually have to make sure that you're taking the math and the other courses that you need to get to take in order to be able to be prepared to take an AA degree by the time you're a junior in high school. And so everything gets rushed and pushed down, and we just need to make sure families understand what the implications are.
Ms. Battle Lockhart?
Thank you for bringing, that was in my brain, but I just, I'm glad you said that. The counselor piece is one of the ones that really is, like she said, a driver, and I'm just curious, is there a point in time, is there check-ins that they do, or supposed to do, with students to kind of see where they are, how they're feeling, what they're thinking? Because, you know, I got the junior going into, you know, so now, I haven't seen very much hands-on from a counselor, guiding counselor standpoint, only when it's time to choose classes. So is there going to be a time where we're going to have those more frequently? I don't, I'm not saying one-on-one, but even just as a group, because I know it's too much to expect somebody to do one-on-one, yeah.
So great feedback, Ms. Battle Lockhart. So first of all, I'd just like to say I will take that back to our supervising counselor, Ms. Chavez, but I do know that there is a requirement of the counselors to be sure they are doing just that. But what that looks like as far as how it's been presented to the counselors, I couldn't speak to it so much, but I'll be glad to. But I'll be glad to share that with Ms. Chavez, to, to be sure there is a, a regular kind of checking in with those students. That's what you're talking about? Your seniors in particular?
No, it's now. Like, you're talking about middle schoolers, but I'm talking about high schoolers specifically. To his point, even with the middle school piece that he's saying that they're introducing it now. So it's, that's a great time for the, the guidance counselor to kind of hone in to. If that's the thing that they need, then they know how to ask those questions about the math and the reading that may be required for those specific CTE courses that they'll be interested.
That, that kind of thing is not happening. I just don't, don't want to, you know, speak without, speak out of turn without knowing for sure exactly what, what it looks like. But Mr. Lounds, are you going to mention anything else?
Yeah, so one of the things that we understand is the whole scheduling process, we need a little bit, be a little bit more intentional with. And so beginning with a program of studies, we're looking at that and we're looking at, at making it earlier. Because one of the things that we've, through the pilot programs for the middle schools and through some of these new pathways with the early colleges, what we've learned is that our processes are late down the road. And it doesn't give us the time to start and work with families and help them understand to the level that they need in order to make decisions early on. And, and because the process was so late, which we learned with our early college last year, that we were asking families to make decisions at the end of the year to pick and choose early college. And a lot of that is built on starting with the course selection with students. So, so counselors meet with students when they do their course selections. They do the course selections, they pick the courses and they meet with their, their counselors and they go over the course selections and look at what they, they picked. But the, the process needs to actually start much sooner. And then in order for that process to start sooner, we have to make sure that the courses that we're going to be offering next year are all set and in the program of study so that it can be out there to families to start having these discussions. So one of the things that we have learned is that we need to be more intentional within the process overall. Part of that is with our counselors meeting and having these discussions with our students.
And lastly, with the data that you have here, and I hear you said at least one CTE course. So are we, as a part of that conversation, do we know why people are leaving or not completing or finishing so we can understand a little bit more why the numbers drop?
So we're in the process of looking at that. But one, one of the things that I, I brought up, the reason that a lot of these programs conflict with one another is because one of the programs that will conflict when we talk about our AP numbers and when we talk about our completer programs is the early college program. Students will move and we had all of our students that, 74 students that, that are in the early college this year had chosen an AP class. And so those would have been in our numbers for our advanced placement numbers. But because they were taken out of our courses, because they're going to go, and they're going to go to College of Southern Maryland, take a full load at College of Southern Maryland in the early college program, they are now removed from that AP number and they're now in the early college number. And so the same thing might be with a student if they chose to go into that early college program and they were supposedly within a CTE completer and had only needed one course left their senior year to finish that CTE pathway. But they chose to go to the early college program, they won't complete that and therefore they won't be on our 12th grade completer program. So that's why we have to look, start looking at students more individually to make sure that they have a pathway that they're picking. That's one of these pathways that will give them something when they leave and graduate from Charles County Public Schools.
I just think it'd be great information to, to better understand if that's it, as we move to that, in that direction. So we'll know, even though, even if they're moving from tier to, I mean, category to category, we can say, well, we lost 22 this program or the early college program or so many to this program. So at least we know, have more information of where the movement is happening or they just left the program overall.
One thing the blueprint required us to do this year was to create a ninth grade tracker system. And it, it, it will allow us to look at students from, beginning in their ninth grade, are they on track for graduation? And what does that look like? Steve, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, we, we posted, at, at the semester time, we posted a ninth grade graduation tracker for every ninth grade student so that they were able to see where they were and where their courses that they were currently enrolled in, what that would have, what kind of impact that would have. So they had work in progress. So what we're doing is we're waiting until the 10-day timeframe after the courses are, after the school year starts. And we're going to post again for all the 10th, 11th and 12th grade with their work in progress on that same sheet. So those ninth grade students right now from last year will have where they were at the semester and they'll also have where they are with their current schedule for the 22, 23. And we'll also have all the 10th, 11th and 12th grade students, which the current 10th graders will be previous year's ninth graders. But they're going to have a graduation tracker that'll show based on their, what courses they've completed, whether it was middle school courses that counted as high school credit or their high school classes that they've completed, as well as what courses they have on their schedule for this year, what that does in terms of credits needed, what things they, what they have already knocked out in terms of courses that are required. So it's going to be a real nice tool that the families will have right in front of them to be able to see where they are. So as soon as those are, those posted, they'll be right available for parents and students on Student View and Parent View. So pretty nice. And right now, again, the, the current 10th graders who were ninth graders last year have their semester progress from their freshman year. So we'll continue to do that and we'll do it again this year at the ninth, for the ninth graders at the semester time, post that ninth grade tracker. Then at the beginning of the next year, we'll post all the 10th, 11th and 12th graders' progress as well.
I would love to see something like that as a parent, so thank you.
We've talked about that before.
It's part of the blueprint requirement is to have the ninth grade tracker. But we're, we're not, we're not stopping at ninth grade. We're going to do it for all, all students all the way across.
Ms. Pearson, did you have something you wanted to add to, for Ms. Battle Lockhart?
Yeah, so for these numbers, just remember that I just started with that they are in isolation. So for the blue is enrollment, which means it's anybody that's in any CTE course. So it could be the first course, second course, third course, whatever. So that number is going to be significantly higher because the completers are just those seniors that have just finished. So where we're, we're looking at the full span of high school compared to the seniors. So they're, they're, they're hard to compare in that way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One more thing here, if I may, Ms. Battle Lockhart, just so that the public doesn't have to wait any longer than they have to regarding the check-ins with counselors. And so I have learned that, and some of this I knew, but I didn't know the timeline or how the expectation had been made. But the classroom presentations are made with each grade level at the start of the year. Frequent career cruising, and we're talking about high school, career cruising lessons with the students to help them. That happens frequently, helps them identify post-high school options, course selection presentations to all students each year. And that typically occurs through their, their English class or their homeroom. And then, of course, this is on top of their, their student meetings regarding course selections and any other socio-emotional kinds of sessions that they may have. So, so lots of things, timeline, when those things, how frequently, those will be some, some things I'd have to get more specific information for you. But, but.
No worries. I appreciate that. But, and just to piggyback on that, I, I do hear that some things are happening. But as we hear a lot, to get parents involved, we, we need to know what's happening so we can hold them accountable for making sure that they're following through on it, that, whatever they spoke about. So it may be happening in some places that we just don't know. Thank you, though.
So the next program I want to talk about is the early college program. So this is our first year with a, a class at the College of Southern Maryland full-time. These students were, are taken out of their classes. They, they originally selected classes for their senior years, then they applied for an application to get into a college program. Once they got into the early college program, they were taken out of their classes in their high schools and they will go full-time to the College of Southern Maryland. Last week was the initial parent meeting. We had a kickoff with Dr. Navarro and Dr. Murphy. I don't know if you want to say anything, Dr. Navarro, about the kickoff?
The only thing that I want to point out in this graph is important to see just trajectories. And this is what education's supposed to do. If you look at the breakdown, the most interesting number for me is the first time college. Forty-four percent of this group starting self-reported that neither of their parent had ever gone to college. And so when these programs start and what the research says about the students is that, you know, we have a lot of students, if they're first time, first generation college course, they tend to drop out even before they finish their first year. But if they have experiences with college at the high school level, they tend to have higher persistence and persevering rates. So to me, the most interesting number here is that about, oh, close to half of our students are going to get an experience that ties them into college before they leave high school and hopefully supports them through. And I think the way that CSM has structured the seminars to help students understand how to organize their time and to be successful in taking college courses will help them a lot more as they transition to now be second-year college students, first time out of high school. So those are the numbers that are impactful in my mind. Because whatever data we put forward, we have to think about what's the strategy behind the data. And for us, the strategy behind the data is looking at what are the opportunities that we're providing students that otherwise may not have or that we already know that research tells us are not going to be persistent if they're not supported while they're in high school. And we had a great time doing selfies with all the 200-plus parent, families and students that were there.
So I just wanted to let everyone know, we are opening it up to all the high schools this year. This year, we started out with four as a pilot and then we are opening it up to the rest of the high schools. We are also going to be offering an AA degree program, which means we'll be opening it up to 11th and 12th graders next year. We'll be having the, the students that are, currently seniors will be able to take, get into the 31 credit program, such as the class this year. But we will open up opportunities for 11th graders if they want to go for an AA. I'll be coming later this year to, to talk a little bit more about what the programs are with the AA. We are currently in the process of planning with the College of Southern Maryland and looking at that program to see what we're going to be able to be offering.
That's sweet.
That's good. Very good.
And so the last slide is advanced placement and dual enrollment. Currently, we have the advanced placement numbers and we don't have the dual enrollment numbers. We're in the process of working with the College of Southern Maryland to try, try to figure out how we can collect those numbers. Because the students that are in their home high schools that take an English class or a math class as a dual enrollment credit have to submit on their own, with their family, to the college to get the credit. And we're trying to figure out how we can capture that data so that we have a better understanding as to who got that credit as well as the high school course within their home high school. So we're working on that data. But with the advanced placement data, you'll see that last year's number trended down unfortunately as far as enrollment. The, it's pretty consistent and the bottom number is the scores. But as of right now, we are trending back up based on the number of AP classes students have taken with one or more. And so we won't have hard numbers until during the year because we are still fixing schedules and getting students into schedules and trying to work out conflicts. And so I don't have hard numbers for you right now. But as of right now, we're a little over 1,900 students taking at least one or more AP classes. So it would be more than this past year. Any questions on any of the, the data slides that I presented were access and opportunity? Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Yep, thank you, sir. So we are on now to priority three, culture and climate. And so it's set up exactly the same as far as the dropdown menus there. Yes, thank you, mister. No, you're fine. I can't see it from there. That's why I got my laptop. So if you, if you click on the first tab, Evidence of Implementation of Climate Strategy in Schools. And so, Dr. Navar, no, I'm sorry, did I skip one? Sorry, let me go back. I skipped the first one. School Completion of Continuous Improvement Plans. And so you'll see there's just a statement there at this time because we are just now finishing. The, the schools are finishing their writing of the school improvement plans. This process did begin, as Dr. Navarro mentioned earlier, back in June with the school teams, their professional learning teams. And so they've been working over the summer and this work continues. We did some more work with the school improvement writing at the schooling, at the Leadership Institute a couple of weeks ago now. And, and you heard Mr. Lounds talk about the powerful instructional practice. And so at that same time, the schools were required to begin writing their, their, their school climate strategy that will be included as a part of that, the school improvement plan. And so there, there was support at the Leadership Institute for our schools and the particular area of climate and culture that they wanted to address. And so this will be an ongoing kind of experience. It's not, as Dr. Navarro mentioned, it's not a, a one-shot deal. We're writing the plan and then we're done. It's a fluid kind of thing. And so this is the start of it. And so at this point, we don't have data to really plot out there to, to share as far as the school improvement plans go. But that data may be that it's, you know, they have one or they don't, when it comes down to it. But as it stands right now, that's, it's just a, a statement there because of where we are with writing the actual plan.
But I will say, I, I know, Vice Chair, Wilson, you asked if the schools have to do it or not. So there, there is a template that all schools are filling out. And we started back in June to help them walk through the first couple of steps of the school improvement plan process. And then we brought them back. And then it, that was in June and then we brought them back and we gave them some time to work together. During the summer, we gave them some days and some money to bring in folks that were not 12-month or 11-month employees to make sure that they had the teachers as part of that team where they could make some adjustments during the summer. And then we brought them back on August 11th as part of the Leadership Institute, the first day, to go over the next couple of steps within the school improvement plan process. But they are filling out a template. All schools are filling out the template and filling out a plan.
And so moving on to the evidence of implementation of their climate strategy, again, forthcoming data with regard to this area. And, and this will, the, the strategy or the progress that will be attained, it will be monitored through one of the offices within our office now, the Community Engagement Equity Office, as well as the Student Services Office, the two groups that supported our schools as they wrote their school climate strategies at the Leadership Institute and at the beginning of the, back in June when we first started this process. So those offices will help schools monitor their, their strategies. And then you have some data that we are able to share under the number of referrals. Not present data, of course, because the school year is just beginning. But this is our baseline data, if you will, from last school year. And none of this information should be unfamiliar to you. It's, the slides are, if not the same, very similar to the ones we looked at at a previous board meeting a few months ago, I believe. So discipline violations, if you're looking at the one with the large triangle basis, green. Again, last year's discipline violations. It, it shows us that the vast majority of our students did not have any major or minor discipline violations. And then we did have a very few at the top there, the small red triangle. Last school year, they had about 9.3% of our students that did have a violation. Scrolling down a little more on that same slide, you'll see discipline violations count for the last four years. And you can see that the data is, is similar except for the one odd year, which happens to be the year that we were all virtual. So the number of students that had no violations was about 99%. So, so that, you know, and when the students are at home, they, they were not getting in too much trouble, so.
Yeah, that's cool.
Well, yeah, well, it wasn't documented. But, but the other years, we, we hover right around the same percentages. You, you can see that, of course, we're looking to improve there. But we have at least over the last four years hovered. the last four years, hovered around the, the same percentages with the numbers of students with no violations and the numbers of students, or percentages of students with a 1 to 2 and 3 plus. So a little, a little similar. And then, so again, just a few pieces of data there. We, again, baseline data, we do have much more specific data, some of that you've seen, and some of that, well, you certainly will see when we go to update with this year's data. The next tab down, did you go to the next one? Yes. You might have to make it a little bigger on your screen, I, I did. The number, numbers of students, again, over a four-year period, looking, again, similar data, the out-of-school suspensions, you can see that, you know, it was almost not applicable in the year, the COVID year, I'm sorry, the virtual year. But you can see the, the numbers there. And this is how this data will be input. If we scroll down a little more, you can see the blue and orange graphs, out-of-school suspensions compared by subgroup. And this is always an interesting, and, and interesting, I don't know if this is the right word, or concerning, but looking at by subgroup, in particular, the first blue and orange column, 56% of our students are African-American, and of that, I lost my place. And who make up SEPS, 75.9% of the suspensions that we have were from 56% of African-American students. Good data to have, certainly an area that we are focused on and, and we have as a priority to work on, but, but just the raw data from last year, baseline data from last year at this point. Another one of the metrics that priority three was required to, requires us to keep track of is the participation and number of options and extracurricular activities. And so again, there is a statement here because we don't, we haven't started this school year yet to really measure that. And so, so this information will be collected over the year and monitored carefully, particularly given the adjustment to our eligibility policy. We, we are going to be very interested in what that looks like moving forward in comparison to what it has looked like. And so the last one is very similar, number of active school community partnerships. And again, within our office, the Department of Equity, I'm sorry, Community Engagement Equity is working feverishly to increase and enhance some of our partnerships with different groups within the community. And so we do expect some good data when we are able to measure that. We don't have anything to report as far as current data with, in that regard at this time.
Ms. Wilson?
So, yes.
So very extremely appreciative about the transparency with regard to discipline. This continues to be an ongoing discussion. I think it's important that we look, when we look at these suspensions, I think we really need to take a deeper dive with regard to soft offenses and hard offensive, and offenses. Because in terms of, if there is a trend of bringing a knife to, to school, then obviously, as administrators and counselors, you can bring in programs or institute, you know, counters to that. And though I like the fact that you're presenting this data, I, I think there needs to be a deeper dive. I, you know, we can talk about soft offenses, not that any, you know, frac, infraction is acceptable, but discipline has always been this challenge. And for the eight years that I've had the pleasure of doing around this system, we, we always, and as we should, we look at the disparity among African-American males. And I think that deep, that specific area just is begging for a deeper dive. And I'm saying this, being a member, former member of the NAACP and now as a board member, you know, and, and as a system, I know parents out there, they want to know that their children are in a safe environment. And so I, I think we need to look at the types, you know, I know at one time, there used to be a, a chart for different codes of offenses. And I, and I think we need to be conscious to make sure there isn't an uptick in the, in the hard stuff, so that we don't have a culture that starts to get embedded.
Sure.
And, and it's, it's, it's been a long journey on this discussion, a long journey. And so, though I like the presentation of information, the whole point in having da- data is to do the analysis to say, okay, and, and sometimes we're not getting specific enough.
Right, right.
And, you know, what, I bet you, if you broke this down even further, I think you would see some trends, you know? Maybe we need to implement character training, you know?
Sure.
Because we want discipline in schools, and we want a safe environment. And increasingly, the school system and partnerships with our nonprofit, you know, we need to have a strategy based on this deep dive to address these, these, these issues. Because it's almost like, eight years ago, we were still having this very same discussion, the very same discussion. And then you, you put, put the COVID and the stressors that have been out there, it just makes me wonder about those harder offenses in Charles County school system. Where, where are we? And I know we have to compare apples to apples, but this is, this is the one specific area that I just, we just, it's, it's been a bear to tackle.
Yes, yes. Points well taken, Ms. Wilson, for sure, which is, I, I believe, a big part of why the culture and climate and engagement strategy was purposefully put into the strategic, strategic plan so that we would not lose the focus on it. You know, we, we, in the past, have talked about it, and we've worked really hard on it in individual places, but the collective efforts that are documented as things that are going to be measured, I think this is a step in the right direction. You know, this today was just some data, but it doesn't reflect the, the work that's planned to, to really be able, I think, to implement the culture and climate strategies and then to monitor them and to increase and enhance. And that's why it's a fluid kind of thing. And so, so I do think this is a step in the right direction, which is absolutely right. The, the data is just numbers at this point without us not working hard continuously to do something with and about it.
Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. I just want to say how cool this is to have, have something like this, a dashboard, where we are putting everything, it's easy to use, it's right there for everyone in the community to, to access and see what our strategic plan is. So I want to give kudos to the superintendent and to all of you guys for, for creating this and implementing it. I think it's awesome. It, you know, we're saying, working together to achieve excellence for every student, working together, this tool allows us to work together. We can, any, you know, before this, if you wanted to see a file, such as what Ms. Wilson was talking about, on suspensions, you could find it through Board Docs, through something on the quick links of a meeting we had. This is right there, and it's easy and it's engaging. It shows the progress that we've made and the lack thereof in some cases, but it's very transparent. And for instance, if you go as to what Ms. Wilson was talking about, we have a, have a situation with suspension with, with, with African-Americans. And how, how do we address that? And I don't think the answer is lowering any standards, but there, there is an issue, and how do we help those students? But it's there, it's not all pretty, but it's reality, it's there, it's easy to use, it's easy to tell somebody where to go to find that information. I think it's, it's an excellent tool, and you guys did a great presentation, thank you.
Some, this reminds me of a little bit of the Maryland Report Card.
Yeah.
That used to, you know, people used to go to that, and it's a little better. I mean, that, that, that tool was, was good, it was a little kludgy to, to get stuff, but it had a lot of information available. But this, the layout of this and the ease of use, as Mr. Hancock said, everyone involved should be commended. It's very good. Ms. Battle Lockhart?
Thank you. To Ms. Wilson's point, she's in my head tonight. I just wanted to talk about if Dr. Navarro and I were a part of the conversation at the county government about addressing these, these items. Because as you guys hear me always say, this is, has to be a holistic approach. This is not a school system problem, this is a community problem that everybody needs to be involved in. But I do agree with, the more we break down what, and find out what the challenges are, we can dig deeper to be able to reach the, the county agencies that can serve those deeds, that you guys probably can't serve, or the community that can serve to support those individuals. But the beauty of our findings, although we're trying to identify the challenges within the African-American male specifically, but African-Americans overall, once we identify that, we can, it applies holistically across the board and may be able to be able to address a lot of other issues as well. And also, to the point as well, we've been addressing the African-American staff here at the, in the school system, maybe that, once we start pulling data, city now having that conversation with a pool of African-American students to really get a understanding of what they see the challenges, what they feel their needs are, instead of assuming what their needs are. I think the student voice on that area is going to be very important for us to really understand instead of, you know, although the data will say what the, what the, the action was, or what the consequence was, or what the outcome was, but just like talking through to really understand. Because as I walk, as an African-American woman and teach at-risk youth, I, I hear, and I know some of their challenges, and it's not always here. So that's why I always stress, this is a community thing, this is not a school thing. So we have to come together holistically to be able to help the superintendent and you all really, really capture this data and really be able to resolve some of the issues. We're not going to fix it whole, I mean, 100%, but at least be able to have the resources in place that can support you in supporting them when they're here, and then we can support them when they're out there. That's the goal, in my opinion. But thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point, you know, that, I think another point that the data shows that, you know, 95% of our students aren't being suspended, right? So it is a very small part of the student population across all, everything in the R and O spectrum, but, you know, 95% of our students are not being suspended. So it's a small amount of students, and, and breaking it down like this will help us focus our resources. But, but Ms. Battle Lockhart is, is spot on, you know, it's, it's, it's everybody's responsibility. Appreciate you bringing that up. Any other comments or questions? Ms. McGraw?
I would just like to say thank you very much for the presentation. It's, it's very exciting to me to see this information come together. I almost wish that I was going to be here.
Almost.
Because I really, I said, almost. Well, because I really like the fact that we're focusing in on one powerful instructional practice in during, in the, as part of the school improvement plans. And I, I would look forward to having schools, I'd be interested in knowing what they are, and have schools present at some point throughout the school year as to what those practices are and how they're being implemented and, and what their success is. Instead of being, you know, very global, it's nice to hear that there'll be a focus for that year, and the supports are there for them. I like the fact that they're going to be coming together, I think you said eight times throughout the year. That's a part I almost wish I was there for.
We'll invite you.
Okay. So thank you so much.
So we're kind of serious about the invitation piece, although we just left. Part of, part of what I think is important is if you want to see the struggles of what it means to be a student of the work, whether we are talking about reading and what we can be doing, and then doing a walkthrough to see if what we just learned is actually happening in classrooms, we need to be there. So I would love for board members, through Kevin, for the powerful instructional practice, and the same kind of learning we're going to be doing as we tackle the climate, because we can't just learn around reading and math and how to teach it and writing and so forth. We also have to learn and continuously learn and see if those practices are when we talk about our, our climate strategy. So I, I seriously would love to have all board members at some point, and we'll let you know the dates and times, for you to come see what the teams are, are doing, because we have classroom teachers in those teams, we have principals, assistant principals, we're going to be developing their capacity to support all of their staff on how we get better together at what we want the classroom environment, the learning experience for students to be. And if we do our jobs correctly, we will always be walking in and out of school situations, whether you're in the classroom, in the hallways and everything, and trying to look at the learning and the experience of the students' eyes, and then going back and reflecting on the adult pieces. So, you know, I feel some type of way about the board transitions and so forth. But I do want to invite you this fall to join us, because it is work, and it is going to feel like exhausting work with everything that has to get done. But we have to be cognizant that we are always learning and modeling that for our students. So we have to continuously learn and struggle through the practices that say, you know, we're going to walk into a building, and we all said we're working on writing and so forth, and we go to 80 classrooms, and only 10 are doing what we have been working for two months on to actually have students experience. And we got to come back and look at each other in the face and say, what are we all going to do together now? What's not working? And that cycles of learning, that doesn't wait for an entire year or for an assessment to come back two or three times a year, that's a way of being, and that's where we're heading. We are going to be this, this way, we're going to help each other, and we're going to learn through. But we are continuously learning so that we can change our practices and improve our practices so that kids really have a different experience when they come to us. So I do want the board members, the student member of the board, everybody to, at some point, if you're able to, please join us, because it is, it is dynamic work. It is the work that we should be honed in on, is what the district is going to be focused on.
And I think, you know, it'd be great to see it at all levels, right? So coming to the training at the district level, you get to see these planning teams, learning teams, coming together and struggling and understanding what it is that they're trying to do at the school level. And then you get to go watch them at the school level implement it with their staff. And then later on, as Dr. Navarro said, go through the walkthroughs to see whether the powerful and practice is actually being implemented down at this classroom level. And so it, you know, it's, it's a good time to actually do it and come see it now, because this is when folks are really trying to figure it out, and we're all trying to learn together. Because it is messy work, it's not going to be clean, it's, it's going to be people struggling to understand, because, you know, the, the practice that's being implemented at La Plata High School is going to be implemented differently and taught differently and understood differently at Lackey High School. But they're all going to have a practice, and they're all going to implement it, and it's all going to be done eventually down at the classroom level on a consistent basis. But, you know, from the beginning, you'll see what it looks like and how everyone struggles and works together as a team to come together and really make it happen.
Ms. Brown, did you have something?
Well, Dr. Navarro took a lot of it.
Okay.
So all I'm going to say is a great presentation, and I think this could show the public that we are trying our best to meet the needs of all of the students, because we're giving offerings for those that want to go to CSM, and then we're going to try to do something with that group of kids that's not exactly engaging in school the way we want them to. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Very, very informative. Okay, we have just a couple of housekeeping items to do. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to amend the superintendent's contract relative to Section A, Paragraph 10.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Brown. Those in favor, please raise your hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Is that the date?
Okay, it's Ms. McGraw, Ms. Battle Lockhart, Ms. Abel, Ms. Wilson, myself, Ms. Brown and Mr. Hancock. Thank you very much. Second item, Chair will entertain a motion for addendum B to the superintendent's contract that deals with Section B, Paragraph 1.
So moved, second?
Moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Brown. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. McGraw, Ms. Wilson, myself, Ms. Brown, Mr. Hancock. All those opposed? Ms. Battle Lockhart, Ms. Abel. Thank you very much. Unless anyone has anything else? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Abel. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous, including student members. Thank you very much.